Called a meeting to order. Invite you to join with me in the invocation. Dear Lord, we are thankful this day for all the blessings you have bestowed on us, and we are thankful for the resurrection of Jesus Christ. You have given us the gifts of faith, hope, and love. You strengthen our hope so that we may continue to walk with you. You deepen our faith so that we may trust that you are with us in all that we do. You show us your love so that we may show others the gifts you have promised to all. Give us the ability to lead, listen, and feel. We pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Item number three is consider approval of the minutes from the March 21st, 2022 regular meeting.
Luke approved.
Motion by Councilmember Rogers.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number four, announced allegations Debbie Bennett, Stanley County Health Department, to discuss the Health Department's 2021 County Health Assessment Survey.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to come here tonight and to share this incredible report with you. It is a fascinating read. And you don't even have to like data to be fascinating. But if you like data, you will be in heaven. I tell you, this is a wonderful report. It's very helpful, very beneficial, and I'm just pleased that I can present a snippet. It's 220 pages. If I really went into it the way I could, you all would be going to next year's basketball game because you all would still be here. But let's get started. What's involved with this community health assessment that you all hopefully participated in was the survey, and the survey was part of it, the information we gleaned from that. We had six focus groups that shared their insights, their opinions that are a part of this report, and of course, there's data. Oops. Ah, we'll get this thing going. Maybe.
Technology at its best, Debbie.
I know. I have an opinion of that. Oh, here we go. Here we go. Okay. Now, the community health survey, if you all participated in it, was only a month, January 14th through February 14th of 2021. We had six focus groups. These are the six focus groups that participated in face-to-face, even during the pandemic. I like face-to-face. Sterilized the place. Place is probably cleaner than it's ever been in its life. But United Way of Stanley County Leadership Board, those members, Stanley County Partners in Health members, Stanley County Minority Health Council, and Grace Place Friends were part, they were part of a list where our 2021 Community Health Assessment Advisory Committee gave me a list of groups and said, contact them and see if they want to participate. Those are the four groups that said they would like to participate. Baden City Council asked to participate when I presented them with the information about the survey process. And Stanley Adult Day Healthcare Committee, or Stanley Adult Care Center as it's known now, they saw the invitation on our Facebook page at the Health Department and said, we would like to participate. So that's how we got our focus groups. The data in here, most of it's from NC State Center for Health Statistics and the U.S. Census, but we also have wonderful local information from local agencies here that tell us what they are doing. Part of this survey was quality of life, jobs and opportunities. People didn't see all the jobs and opportunities that they wanted at this time, but as you know, since 2021, there's been a lot going on here. So the way I look at that is that if people want to work and are able to work, there is going to be the opportunity to work. With all the new jobs coming in, all the expansions of businesses that are already here, it is just waiting to bloom in the springtime. Now, the positive, people thought, oh, Stanley County was a great place to raise children, grow older, there's healthcare available, and it's a safe place to live. The 2015-2019 leading cause of mortality, I will tell you, this is old data to me, but the state's a year behind giving us the more current, so this is the most current I could get. These are the five leading causes of death in Stanley County. There are 19 that the state gives us. But heart disease and cancer, all sites, that's been number one and number two since I can remember. Alzheimer's disease, that now was number three. When I did the last community health assessment, it was number six. All other unintentional injuries, and all other unintentional injuries are injuries caused by anything other than a motor vehicle. So we're talking drowning, burns, folks that accidentally poisoned themselves, or overdosed, suffocation, falls. So keep that in mind, this, all other unintentional injuries. Chronic low respiratory disease, that was number four. Now, these next few slides are simply mind-boggling. If you look at the heart disease mortality, this is 2016, 2010 through 2015, 2019, we're doing something right. We're trending downward. We're still higher than the state rate, but we are trending downward. Cancer, all sites, look at that. That is dramatic, trending downward. That is great news for this county, for the people in this county. Now here's something that's a little, we're going to have to get a handle on, Alzheimer's disease mortality. If you'll notice, we're having a dramatic trend upward, and we'll talk more about that one. And all other unintentional injuries, cause of death, again, a dramatic trend upward. And all 19 of the diseases, I've put those charts together for people to look at. If you like really nice pictures and you don't like to read words, those are wonderful. Now, the community health assessment report, issue categories are health, access to, and access to is a new category. UNC came in, looked at our instrument, our survey tool, and said, you need to make this simpler. So they took some of the information out of community and put it in access to, and made it simpler for us to explain. So health, access to, and communities are the different categories. Now, those categories are then subsets. We have in every category, the overall, what the big picture is. Then we have it according to zip code. We joined the zip codes east, north, south, and west, but I can give any community, any city, any municipality in this county, I can give them their own individual information if they ask for it. Sex, male, female, racial identity, age, people 15 through 84, 85 plus could fill out this survey. Education, those who didn't even graduate from grade school, all the way to people who have a doctorate degree. We can divide that information up. Marital status, single to widowed, household income from under $10,000 to over $100,000. So we have all that information, we have all those tables. Again, if you like tables and data, oh my gracious, it's there. Now, Albemarle, 2801, 2802, zip code, that is the east. Anytime you see east, that is these two zip codes. And if you'll notice, 528 participants, that's over, little over half, 52% because there were 1,015 people that computed, completed this survey basically online because we could not go out because COVID was in a pandemic mode. Now, the overall health issues, there were 20, but these are the top five. Substance use disorder, overdose, obesity overweight, tobacco use, those are usually our top three. Then mental illness, the interesting thing about mental illness is, in the past, we've centered on youth and children and mental illness, but because of COVID, the adults slid in there too this time. There was concern about adult and mental illness. Inactivity and lack of physical activity, again, remember, this was during COVID. This is just a short little snippet of one of the tables because, again, all 20 are there. But if you'll notice, east and overall pretty much mimic each other on this one. But if you go to north, they have diabetes and heart diseases, four and five. So different places in this county see different needs. They see different problems that need to be addressed. Overall, access to issues, there were 10. They need access to substance use disorder treatment centers. Adult daycare was number two. Healthcare specialists, mental health services, and dental care for adults. When I'm out in the community, the three areas that I get asked about most often, and that is dental care for adults, adult daycare, and mammograms, those are the three areas that when I'm out in the community and someone says, I have a question, I'm pretty sure it's going to be one of those three. And you can see here, this is again, a snippet with the zip code, and we're lining right up, east and overall, but again, some access to in-home care, that's a concern for some. So it just depends on your area, your zip code. Overall, community issues, there were 18. Unemployment, underemployment, again, that's not going to be a problem, I believe, in the near future because of what you all are doing and what the county commissioners are doing and what Candace Lauter is doing, what everybody's doing together to bring business here. Poverty is a problem. Lack of or inadequate health insurance, even with the Affordable Care Act, people cannot afford insurance. They cannot afford it. Crime has snuck up into the top five. That's a concern. And homelessness. And again, if you'll notice now, overall and east have changed a little bit. In the east, crime and homelessness are tied for second. Poverty and racism are their top five with unemployment, underemployment. And if you'll look at overall, it's unemployment, underemployment, poverty, lack of or inadequate health insurance, crime, and homelessness. So we have a little difference now. So always remember, east is Albemarle.
Is north Baden, New London, Meisenheim, and Richfield?
Yes.
Okay. And then south is probably just Norwood, Accordale, just Norwood, Nacogdoal area.
We forgot the zip code, it's Norwood.
Just the Norwood's zip code. Okay.
Yeah, and then west is Stanfield, Oakboro, Locust.
Gotcha, thank you.
Now, we had focus groups. These focus groups were fantastic. We met for an hour, and it was limited to an hour, and that was because I wanted people to be able to know that they weren't going to be there all night. We had a lot of different topics on health issues and community issues, more than what I've shown here, but substance misuse, obesity, and mental health were issues of concern, disparities. And when you think of disparities, you usually think of African-American versus white. And we're doing something right here because our African-American babies, their mortality is closing up now, and that could be because of one of the programs we're doing at the Health Department, Healthy Beginnings, but there is a disparity that is very jaw-dropping, and that is the disparity between male and female. Males die earlier than women.
That's a fact.
Uh-huh. Which I found, nobody ever talks about that. Nobody talks about that, but that was brought up. Dementia and transportation was a concern, getting around the community. Other sections, we had some COVID-19 prevention questions, seeing if people did the recommended health screenings, seeing what the barriers were for accessing services and responses to emergency situations, like why wouldn't people evacuate if they were told, or where do they get their information from? At the very end of this report, there's a community resource list that is wonderful. It's just not health issues. It has museums, it has parks. This county has wonderful parks. If you have not been to a park for Golden Shoe, I highly recommend you go out there for the butterflies because the Butterfly House is having us hide butterflies in the parks right now for the next two weeks. Go out, families are out there. People are out there walking, they're playing in the, with all the equipment out there and they're walking. It's a great, great thing. But we do have a community resource list that is available. I'd like to just talk about two areas. One is Project Lazarus, and this deals with substance misuse. And folks, this, you already know, we were number one for so long for ED visits and all the problems. It's not one of those things you want to put on your t-shirt and say, yeah, we're number one, thank you. Jennifer Layton, who was a former health educator here, five, six years ago, started putting together different groups that were addressing this drug problem because it was here, but it was kind of like flying under the surface. People really, they knew it, but they didn't. And she started putting together the foundation, taking people out of their silos, bringing people together that were working on this problem, and gradually, Project Lazarus came about. And because of all that she did with others and others did with her, when that million-dollar grant came through, they were waiting for it. We had prepared for it. And because of that money, I'm telling you right now, this county is really making some headway on substance misuse in this county. There are less people now being sent to the ED department. Our peer counselor group with EMS, you've got folks that are dealing with treatment, folks that are dealing with prevention, you've got folks that are dealing with harm reduction. This county is really going after this problem, and it's turning it around. You need to hear that something is working because you only hear the problems. This is working. We have evidence-based groups, and there's more money coming down. And if money is used properly, we can get that numbers, those numbers down even farther. This is good news. Adult Day Healthcare, we have services here. We have the Care Cafe, which for a couple days out of the week, because they lack volunteers, they can't open it for four, they have two days a week where they provide caregivers a little bit of time where they can call their own. If any of you have ever cared for somebody who they don't even have to have dementia, just caring for somebody is just tiring. So we have Care Cafe, and on this end, we have assisted living and nursing homes for people that need 24/7 help. Well, lo and behold, we have something now for the middle. And let me first say, I'm a part of this group, so I want you to know that. It's Stanley Adult Care Center. We've purchased a facility on Anderson Road, the old or the former Child Care Center. We've been incorporated, we've applied for a 501(c)(3). What this is going to provide, when we get it up and running, is going to provide people the opportunity to take their adult, 18 and older, regardless of what their health issue is, take their adult, adult family member or friend to this center, to this facility for, from like 6:30 to 6:00 or 6:30, so they can go to work, so they can have a life, plus the person who they're caring for can have a life. One of the things that really was noticeable during the pandemic is people died, not from COVID, they died from loneliness. This facility will provide people the opportunity to interact with each other. It's an opportunity that, somebody was playing music today, and I was by somebody, and they said they didn't know what it was. Well, folks, that wasn't the 70s. These people weren't even thought of in the 70s. So these folks will have an opportunity to talk about something that they all can share. What were you doing in the 70s? That type of thing. So I'm really excited about that. That's something that's come in here. We have an executive director. It's just going to take a little bit of time to get it here, but I want you to know, it's on its way. And that's what I love about this county, this city. We see situations that need to be addressed, we address them. We go after them. You say, this is a problem, you think, okay, what do we need to do? Albemarle's filled with excitement, and if you folks don't feel it, I don't know how you can't. It is exciting just to walk down the street. There's all things percolating. It's like springtime. You planted the seeds, and now you're just waiting for it to flower. That's this city, that's this county. That is what's going on here, and you are to be commended. You are to be commended, and I thank you for that. And if you want to see this big old report, some night when you have a problem going to sleep, I'm here, it would keep me awake, but there are, please, go to the Health Department's website under Quick Connections, or you can just go to that little number, or if you like the Reader's Digest version, let's see, which one would you prefer to read?
Reader's Digest.
I assumed as such, but thank you so much for this opportunity. Thank you for your support, and thank you for all you do to make this place, this community better for all of us.
Ms. Bennett, I just want to say, first and foremost, thank you so much for all that positive, you know, when you, when you look at, when you look at the agenda and you see that, you know, someone from the Health Department's coming to give us updates, you know, I think from a realistic perspective, we go, uh-oh, or we need to improve on, but I appreciate all the years of service that you've given to this county, the people of this county, and you actually, this is very good stuff. It's good information, and you know, I think that myself, I was kind of enlightened by, you know, the close proximity of the cancer rate, Stanley County versus the state rate. But thank you so much for your positivity. Hopefully, that's just a prelude to the North Carolina Tar Heels victory tonight. I wish you were closer to the game because you would do a great job at the pre-game pump-up session with those folks. So thank you.
Thank you.
Council have any questions?
Yes, no, anywhere, Debbie. And she's like that, Bill. She's like that all the time in every aspect of her life. So a couple, and this, I didn't see it in this, and you didn't touch on it, but just, and this may not be fair, but I thought about it during your presentation. Over, serving on the Smart Start, that, serving on the pre-K, pre-K committee for the Smart Start, over the last five, five or eight years, there has been a dramatic drop in babies being born. Has that picked back up again or not? It was going down in Stanley County, okay? Because there was a time that we couldn't find enough children to go into the pre-K program, and, and that, that might be something that you just find and give back to us because I think that that's something that people that listen to this or watch it might want to know, okay? Because I knew it was dropping at one point.
What I've done is in this, and I didn't mention it, we have peer counties that we have identified.
Right.
And there's a chart in here, two charts, that will have that information. It compares us to counties who are similar to us. And it has all kinds of wonderful information that will have live births.
I may want to just get, I may get that from you, just those two charts. And the other thing is, are you still with the Health Department, not necessarily with this particular report, involved with Safe Kids?
Yes.
Okay. So today I got from Smart Start, the pamphlet or the flyer for the Safe Kids Operation Medicine Take Back, and on April 14th, and that's going to be outside y'all's place, right? From 11, 11 to 3, and I just take this time to talk about whether, because I knew you were on Safe Kids, I sent it to each of you all, and I'm hoping that it can get on the Facebook, for people that are watching this. It's Operation Medicine Drop. You don't have to go to the police department and take your unused medicine, you can go there. And I'm thinking that it is in the parking lot at the Commons.
I'm not sure where.
Okay, well, I just saw the email.
It's next to the old ATM.
Yeah, next to the old ATM. So, but I just, I thought you were on Safe Kids, and I thought that was an opportune time to bring that up.
But continue to bring your unused medications to the police departments, Norwood, Oakboro, and Albemarle, because if people can't access them, they can't misuse them.
That's right.
So continue to do that because they're doing a great job of taking, getting that.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a question? Debbie, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Oh, she's bringing this up.
Thank you very much.
You got any idea when the state numbers will be updated for 2020?
Kevin, I got some more else for you.
Is that been delayed because of COVID?
Thank you. This is a good.
Thank you. Good job. Next, we have an unannounced allegation, Michael Green, candidate for the clerk of
First, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. So I thank council, mayor, and the folks in the audience very much. My name is Michael Green, and I'm running for the clerk of court in Stanley County. I'm a conservative Republican, and I support the Second Amendment. I'm married to Kimberly Green. We have three grown children and one grandchild. I have a passion to serve and make a positive difference in my community. I've served my community for more than half my life. I started when I was 21, and now I'm 56. It's what I know best, enjoy, and what to continue doing. I'm a people person who truly enjoys helping people. I believe in old-school ways where a man or woman is as good as a word, and handshake still means something. I'm the same person, no matter where you see me, I am who I say I am. I'm a retired police captain with 30 years of honorable and distinguished service from the Concord Police Department. I worked as a patrol officer, a dare officer, school resource officer, sergeant of the youth division, and patrol. I was captain over special investigations, which included vice narcotics and the street crimes unit. I retired as captain over David District, which the area in Concord is Concord Mills, Charlotte Motor Speedway, and Concord Airport. I was certified in Division of Criminal Information and understand the administrative order of courts. I was involved with teen court, juvenile crime council, mediation, Project Safe Neighborhood, and courthouse security. As a career law enforcement professional, I've experienced firsthand all aspects and challenges of clerical, administrative, and record-keeping requirements of our court system. I graduated from the North Carolina Justice Academy's Management Development Program, one of the most comprehensive training programs for law enforcement leaders. After the police form, I took the position of security director at Concord Mills for about five years. I left in 2020 simply because I wanted to work closer to home and in my own community. So what does a clerk do and what makes a good clerk? A clerk of court must have sound judgment, a knowledge of the laws, people skills, and duty to service. My law enforcement background has given me the necessary training and experience needed to be a good clerk of court. Administrative clerical Record Keeping part of the job is easy, but there is a lot more to the job than that. The clerk handles wheels, estates, trust, adoptions, and special proceedings. The clerk must make difficult decisions based on the law and facts. Anytime you deal with real people, it's not always cut and clear and dry. You must know how to make the best decision for the person in front of you and follow the law. I have 30 years of experience dealing with people. I use a common sense approach that has never failed me. I have seen people die in front of me, and I've had to tell families that their loved ones were gone. It was not a part of the job I enjoyed, but it has given me real-life experiences that can never be taught. I know how to deal with real people, real people who have real-life problems and find real-life solutions. I've never forgotten that I served my community, and I hold myself accountable to the community. It's a virtue that helps me make good, sound, and lawful decisions. If elected to clerk of court in Stanley County, I'm here to serve all the people of Stanley County. I'm a current member of the West Stanley Rotary Club, past president, was voted Rotarian of the Year in 2020. I feel like the most qualified and experienced candidate for the clerk of court in Stanley County, and I would humbly, humbly ask for your support and vote on May the 17th. Thank you very much. I'll be glad to ask any question, answer any question you have not. If not, I just wanted to be brief and say thank you and let you know who I am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Moving to administrative reports, minimum housing and commercial maintenance update.
Thank you, mayor. Greg Morris is with us tonight, and I'm going to go ahead and let him make this presentation. Where's it? Good evening, everyone. We just like to provide an update for the commercial and minimum housing. Recently, I've been working with the city attorney to ensure that the city is following proper procedures when abating problematic properties. Excuse me. So this is ensuring that any action we take is complying with all applicable laws, rules, and regulations. Sorry. This is a demolition update that I've been working on with Britt and Kevin. As you can see, there's some properties that have probably been on your radar for some time. time, and we're able to kind of move these through. And most of these will be coming for resolution in May. And we're also still getting a lot of feedback and communication with some property owners. These are some of those from the list. The red asterix is signifying a property that the fire department is going to take the initiative to burn. So, that's going to not only get our guys some training, but will also be getting rid of these problematic properties. This one in particular, 443 Colston, I've been working with the property owner, who is going to basically sign an agreement that the city will take it down, and he'll reimburse the city. These are some of the commercial properties that we're working on, and after meetings with the property owners, they are going to be taking these buildings down. This is 2403 Baden Road and 1213 East Main Street in particular. These are some of the cases closed from basically late last year till March. Kind of not that significant in the scheme of things, but we are getting result. We did have a couple of major cases that were closed. This is 224 Leonard, who after a letter, got in contact with the property owner, and they voluntarily demolished the building, and they're going to be putting better housing up there. So, that'll be good. Another one was 802 Louder. That was demolished and reconstructed. So, we'll be getting some safe housing for our residents. These are some of the projects we are all working on. Definitely one in there that we've been getting some complaints on is specifically 211 Ebbin Street, which we're working on. And we've also been able to work with 303 P.D. Avenue, and the property owner of that's working on getting that building up to par and actually wants to reuse it, so it'll bring definite change downtown. Just an additional update I'd like to provide for you is the findings of facts and order after the hearings are filed with the Register of Deeds to ensure violations and orders are attached to the property files. We're working on scheduling hearings for most egregious residential and commercial properties. After Britt and I discussed with other lawyers, they have adopted a worst-first policy. So, we're going after the ones that are vacant. We don't have to worry about, you know, relocating people or anything like that. The abandoned vacant structures are ones that we're trying to get rid of right away while still handling our minimum housing complaints. We've also added the ability where people could visit the website and put in a minimum housing and nuisance complaint, and they'll come right to us, and we'll be able to investigate them. And the priority target areas is now the downtown commercial, and we're looking for specific neighborhoods or streets. This is where we kind of have a cluster of minimum housing cases where one falls, and they kind of all fall into that category. So, it's kind of where we've been. Now, just any questions you guys have?
Go back a couple. And while you're going back a couple, go back one more. No, I'm sorry. Back one more. The sheet, the first sheet, no, back one more. There you go. We know not yet.
One more?
Uh-huh. So, there, for instance, the first one up there, that's the one at Spate Road, right?
Yes.
Findings of fact, a property owner working to demolish buildings. So, I'm just going to choose that one, okay? Because I see that a lot of them out there. Since finding a fact and order has been issued, I understand that. So, what's the timing of that? Because that's... I get asked about that specific piece of property all the time, and I said, you know, it takes a while, it takes a while. Well, Martha, you've been telling me that for nine months now. So, do we have... I want some... A date. What date do we think they've got until?
So, I'd have to check the findings of fact and order, but I believe that if they don't come to us within 60 days, we'll begin the ordinance process.
And then that takes...
Then we'd have to go through whatever the procedure is, whether it's a title search and then announcing it in SNAP and stuff like that.
This one we could bring to y'all, but because the property owner actually came in and said that they were going to do work on it, we typically try to give them time to do that. It's money the city doesn't have to put towards it, as long as they do. So, it's one of those things, after 60 days it has been done, we will be bringing it back.
So, I guess I'm just going to throw it to you. Today is April the 4th. So, we're in that 60 days, right?
We're in that 60 days.
We're in that 60 days now. Just because I get this particular piece of property, I get, I mean, all the time.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I'd like to know, I mean, I want to keep up on that particular piece of property. And if in fact... This is wonderful. I'd love to have a copy of this, but I really want some data on there about when we've given them until. Just, I mean, because people ask all the time, "So, what's going on with that? It's been like that forever." I mean, but thank you for this. I'm tickled that we are where we are. Wish that we could take a match. Is the park chief... That's right, Dolan, don't say that.
Well, you know, it's one of those things. I mean, if they say that they're actually going to take the property down, we try to work with them on that, you know? But we don't have to give them as much time on that. They're coming in, and they're, you know, they're going to fix it up. That's a longer process, and we usually will give them, you know, 30 days to do this, another 30 days to do that, and step it up. They have to meet those times.
And I guess in this particular one, it's been like that since forever. And to the people that live next door to it, they think we're just dragging our feet. I mean, they really do. And here was what I got out of it, though. I said, "Well, you know, right then, we used to not have a commercial code. That was how I got through that process. We have one now, and I don't have any good things to tell them." So...
Well, you will.
Okay.
Yeah, you will. And not just that one. We've got several other commercial properties around there as well. As you can see, there's three of them right there, and we have a couple more that are on our radar as well.
Can you email that out?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
These are all buildings that are too far gone to, even as Kevin was saying, like where we could kind of give them the ability to, you know, give us 30 days to fix this, give us 30 days to fix that.
Yeah.
These buildings are too far gone for repairs, so...
I know 443 Colston Street has been on the radar probably about five years now, you know?
Yes. It's one of those ones that just, you know, we had a list of like 50 or 60 of them at one point, and it's just trying to... You know, it's hard to tell, you know, should we do this one or that one? We just try to spread it around a little bit so we're not just doing everything. We've had some others on Colston Street we've done as well in the past five years.
If I'm not mistaken, I think the last time you all gave us this update, I was of the impression that we had done an ordinance for demolition for a property on the area in Gibson or right in that area. I may be wrong, but I remember that coming before us in the past.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. That one, if you remember, they fixed up the one next to that.
They fixed up the smaller house, yeah.
And I'll have to go back and look at that. That was one of Tony was working with the property owner, the property owner on, and he was supposed to be making repairs. I think that, don't think that's happening, it's probably falling through the cracks, so I'll double-check on that one.
I think that was on the next sheet.
It might be.
I think that I saw that.
I know what we're working on.
Good for him.
I don't think... And another thing, too, we wanted to make sure that we're taking them to follow them through for resolution. I don't want to take like a handful and just start sending notices. So, it's kind of been the way we've been doing it, is following through the resolution and then taking another batch and follow through the resolution.
Well, I'm glad to see that the progress is being made, and we're moving forward. And to everybody out there, this is not a quick process.
No.
There are legalities, there's people you have to contact, and one leads you to another to another, and it's almost like Hansel and Gretel until you get to where you are. And we appreciate what you're doing.
It's private property. I mean, you wouldn't want anybody to still come along.
It shouldn't be easy.
Anytime, just...
Shouldn't be easy.
It needs to be a...
And it's, you know, everybody's got to understand, it just doesn't happen with a clap of their hands or a puff of lightning. It just takes time to do it the right way.
I will say this, we've gotten, I think in the past six months to a year, we've had much better results with several of the property owners. We're getting a higher percentage of them actually working with us to bring them into clients on their own, which is best-case scenario for everybody.
We're getting a lot of people in on hearings, too, to discuss this issue is when we see them, so...
I think the market right now on these properties probably helps a lot of that.
Question count? Thank you very much. We appreciate your presentation.
Nicely done.
Thank you.
Number six is an update on the dance floor at City Lake Park.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Mr. Ferris, just wanted to give you an update on where we are on the dance floor at City Lake Park. I think at the last meeting, we approved to move forward with that project. So, the first estimate for just the concrete pad is around $11,500. I would ask for another $1,500 of leeway just based on the fluctuation of material prices right now. And that's if it can be, and if you guys are willing to wait for it to be done in-house, labor-force-wise. So, right now, again, we would be relying on public work staff for that, and they are working on the E.E. Waddell Parking Lot Project. So, we're looking at sometime in May for that. Had some question... I mean, we need a storage facility, and it will need to be built or at least put on-site. And then I also would want it to be behind the amphitheater so it's not out in the open, it's hidden. So, just, these are very, very rough estimates. $10,000 of design and permit work, and then another $20,000 for materials. Again, that does not include, I mean, that's including if we can do it in-house or not. The, from my understanding, there are two 16-by-20 sections. It's just two sections, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And I know, Mayor Pro Tim Hall, you answered the question that they hauled it on a pickup truck. The longest pickup truck that we have is a long-bed truck, and that's only an eight-foot bed.
Now, let me go back. I don't think that they're in those sections. I think they are pieced. They're not in... It's not one piece.
Okay. Well, we... I would really like to know that information, because that, if they were that large, then they would also weigh around 600 pounds apiece.
No, and it takes that size.
And again, you know, we're talking about staffing that has to come and put it together and take it apart, and those type of issues, and how storage, and then also how we either transport it or those type of things.
Can I ask some questions?
Absolutely.
Where was it going to be placed? Where was the pad going to be?
Okay, if you're...
Just to the right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
If you're looking at the... If you're looking at the amphitheater, just on the right-hand side, just right below where it inclines off of the sidewalk.
Flattens out.
Yes, yes, sir. And so, we'd be able to tie in the ADA requirements right there down that little slope.
Okay. When I looked over this, my initial impression was 16-by-20 sections is huge, and we couldn't...
No, that was just my understanding. Maybe I didn't understand correctly.
Did we get pictures of it?
Well, let me... I'll just tell you, and we are being given the floor by a group that doesn't, does no longer need it, okay? And this particular shag club had four sections of it, and two folks don't want theirs, and the two together is what makes this, okay? And I'm now looking to see if I can find my...
Yeah, these aren't young people either. They're... This is an older group of shaggers and got this stuff, and they're hauling it around themselves. So, we're not talking about two pieces, 32 by whatever the case may be.
I think that's what I was told at that initial meeting.
No, and I think that might just been a communication issue. They may fold in, they may fit in to make that size, okay? But, and I just have what I said to you all.
Because I'm thinking if it's different, if it's more portable, it would affect the size of the storage building.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's right.
Can I ask a question about that as well? When we were down there, I looked behind the amphitheater. There is a pad already poured back there.
It's a small pad.
Okay, these things break down. Let's think what we...
Oh, I have. I mean, my staffer even can we cut it some and break it down even more?
Yeah, let's... Yeah, I'd like to keep that scenario available based upon what we may find out specifically regarding the size. If we can utilize what we have, I think we need to save where we can and spend where we have to.
No, absolutely, Councilmember Dry. I totally agree with you. The optimal storage would be right behind the amphitheater there at City Lake Park.
As long as we keep that option available.
That's the first option, unless we have to go to option two or three.
We're not going to do that.
And what, you know, well, this is just all I had, too. If it is more portable, and you can move it easier, and we don't need half your department to move it, then it could be used at a workstation sometime when it's needed or maybe uptown, you know? Just lay them out, I don't know how flat.
It would probably still be my department's responsibility to move it and put it up.
If it's in smaller sections, it would be easier to move around.
Sure. Yes, sir.
That was my concern, too, when I seen the 16-by-20. And, you know, because when we voted to move forward at the last meeting, I did not envision coming back at the next meeting with a $30,000 or $40,000 cost, you know? I understand, you know, it's being given to us, but I'm... It makes me think, you know, first of all, you know, how much will a regular dance floor with smaller sections cost if we was to buy it straight out, you know? Something that's, that staff can easily handle. I know years ago, you had a smaller dance floor that they used to utilize at the Whittle Center, and I think the people just basically put it together, you know, in a matter of no time, you know? Or maybe they got it from the rental center or somewhere. But it was very user-friendly, you know? And I just don't want us, if at all possible, to incur a $30,000 cost for a building to store a dance floor, you know? That's my only concern, you know?
To your comment there, there are dance floors out on the internet. Obviously, I didn't go after it. I had my wife do it. But the day that we were down there, didn't I say that we... I can't remember the size of it, Mayor. Was it 16 by 28 was like maybe $1,000, and they'd break down.
I thought it was like $6,000. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't recall now. But, you know, that is an option to look at, and they are out there, just all kinds of sizes and all kinds of types of price ranges. And she did find something like a swap-in shop thing, and there was one, and I... I don't know where we are yet, so it'll be gone before we probably get to that point. But, you know, those are, again, there's avenues out there. Let's look down the avenues that we have.
Would Council be agreeable to go ahead and approving the cement and the fence? You're looking at about a 22 by 34 to give room for a fence and for that other floor if we do get it? And go ahead and get that poured, and let staff work on that, and then we'll look at the dance floor and the storage later? Would you be agreeable to that?
And it would just take me, and it's... I will own the responsibility for the communication era, if there was such. I'm sorry. If that, I will take that. The person that's giving us the floor was there that day, and we all probably heard the same thing and probably just envisioned it the same. I will get a picture of what it is put together and what it is taken apart.
Can you get dimensions of that?
Yeah, I'm probably going to say that it's probably eight by whatever the 16... Yeah, I'm probably going to say that it's probably eight by whatever the 16, it's probably four by eights in there to make that, but I will get the specifics of it.
If, correct me Lisa, but if the staff does it, to the mayor's point, this would be after, they're working on the E E Waddell, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, this, so when would they be available, maybe?
Um, it could be as late as around the first part of May.
Okay.
So, take me, you're trying to have it ready by the June.
Ideally, yes. Ideally, that is correct.
That would be, if council-
That'd be a best-case scenario there.
That's a start anyway.
I'll make the motion that we do the, pour the pad and put the fencing up.
Motion by Councilmember Dry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? And we would be bringing back a budget amendment for that because it would have to come out of fund balance. Mr. Ferris?
Is the dance floor that we're talking about anywhere local where we could actually look at it? That would be helpful, you know, to kind of lay eyes on it and see how maneuverables. I, I don't know where it's located.
And I think, I think one piece of it right now is in Indian Trail and the other piece of it is at Myrtle Beach.
I'll go to Myrtle Beach and look at it.
When it was being given, it was a shag club that no longer uses it and no longer needs it.
I'm not joking. I really will go to Myrtle Beach and go look at it.
Let me get back to the vote. The stop for Mr. Ferris. All in favor again? Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, just real quick, I was asked to bring some copies of our spring program and give to everyone, so I'm going to do that. And also, go heels.
There you go.
She, and while she's doing that-
I continue to hear good things about what's happening on Friday nights out at City Lake.
Last week was great. It was wonderful.
Six different people over the weekend that, that Friday night was the first time they'd been out there and they were just absolutely tickled to death with what was going on.
Thank you.
We had a very good turnout. We had a good number of food trucks and most, all of them were busy all night long.
Thank you, ma'am.
Some of them had lines that people were waiting in line 20 to 30 minutes to get their food. So, I was amazed.
So, I asked Lee, or I asked Cindy to have Lisa bring us a copy of this. This is on the web. It's what they emailed out to us today. But we've all got somebody that we can take this to just because all the things that are going on right now at Parks and Rec.
Your municipal calendar is in your agenda. Anyone have any questions? Moving on to the consent agenda, ordinance 2222. Get that opened up, excuse me. To amend the citywide operating budget for fiscal year 21, 22. Ordinance 2221, to amend the American Rescue Plan Grant Project Budget. Number 10, consider road closure for West Alma Baptist Church. Number 11, consider road closure to the Vacan Dash Beach Blast 5K. And number 12, consider road closure for the Vacan Dash Moonlight 5K Run.
May the approval of-
Motion by Councilmember Hall. Second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Under new business, number 13, consider resolution for support of N C D O T project funding. You will see a resolution in your agenda where they are requesting us to support them using contingency funds or funds that they have available in their district to add a turn lane at West Main and St. Martin Road.
May the approval of the resolution.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 14, discussion of the first tranche of A R P A to the support park study. Mr. Ferris?
Thank you, Mayor. Back in September, the city council approved the first tranche spending plan. It's become apparent through some comments that maybe there's some different thoughts as to what was approved and just want to make sure that everyone's on the same page and we understand one particular item. And that is funding for a park study. What staff was talking about was study the area that is on Morrow Avenue at the corner P D and Morrow. Study that area and see if there's something that could be done to serve the surrounding neighborhood as the city owns that property. In hearing some comments, we come to realize that maybe when we're talking about Morrow Avenue, we also were donated some property between Third Street and Fourth Street, Main and M L K from the Morrow family. So, there's Morrow Avenue, Morrow family property. And it appears, I don't, from some of the comments, that maybe people are talking about two, have two different properties in mind. So, just want to have a discussion about that, you know, so that we don't get to a point where we think we're all on the same page and staff moves on one item and somebody says, well, I thought we were doing something else. So, just want to clarify that issue at this point.
Let me give you, let me give you my recollection. I was at, at that first meeting, A R P A, we were through there. That's when we realized that we, the money could be allocated for parks. So, Geraldine was facilitating the meeting. And we found out it had to be in a certain census tract. It couldn't just be any park. So, she pulled up the census tract and we realized the city didn't have a park at all in that tract, which is downtown East Amal. So, I remember this was, we just pulled a number out of the air, 250,000 out of that to study a park. And I suggested the Morrow property, which is a top one. Now, at that meeting, we, I don't think we decided specifically on a property. So, but when I commented, the property I was referring to was a top one.
And that's the property, because I remember that meeting, I, that's the piece I was looking at between third and fourth. That's the piece that was in the census tract and that's, that's what I thought was the issue all along.
Now, we're talking about two different, now, I know Mayo's Baldwin had donated-
That is the area that he donated.
That's, that's behind.
It's part, it's all, it would all be one piece.
Okay.
And we weren't, we weren't saying do that. We just, you know, that's the one we discussed with the one that I mentioned. And, yeah, I think it was going to be to determine later, have a study done. We didn't make any specific, we were just trying to allocate, we allocated the funds to the A B C. Recommended, well, we didn't do it, council approved it, but recommended some for the downtown Wi-Fi and public.
So, I mean, that, I, I was at that meeting as well and on that same committee. So, obviously, I think the, the qualified census tract does include the, the property on Morrow Avenue. So, I think when people are mentioning Morrow, there's two different things in mind. So, is it your thought, and it was listed on the September, first meeting in September agenda as, you know, to study the use of the Morrow property. So, that's how it was listed and that's what was approved. So, again, just, we can make any change at this point. Want to make sure that, you know, if we're going to study the whole qualified census tract and where's the best place for a park, look at all of our properties and have some sort of determination, that doesn't change anything. If we're going to study a specific piece of property, don't want to study property that half of us think we're tending to study and maybe the other half thought it was something else.
So, did I, do I understand you correctly, Michael, in saying that this 250 may, may be enough in the qualified census tract to look at both of those pieces of property?
I don't know. It's, it's, you know, as Councilmember Whitley said, it was just at, during that committee, just trying to pull something that we could study. Seems like it should be enough.
You know, when I hear a, I don't, when I hear a Morrow property, okay? And it's maybe because I've been around for a thousand years, I think about the piece of property between third and fourth. Okay, I don't think about Morrow Avenue, but I know that we own a piece over there I, I always think about and maybe we just need that clarification.
Sure. And I guess from staff standpoint, that's the, the property on Morrow Avenue P D. That's the one we have to do maintenance on and mow and do other things too, so that's more prevalent in our mind. So, again, does not matter. I think it's, want to under, explain what the potential confusion was about. And it's easy to understand that, all the same qualified census tract in the same general area, same name. So, as long as we know what we're doing moving forward, I think it's fine.
I'll, I'll go back probably about 10 years. I, I remember, I think Downtown Development was talking about the property between third and fourth about possible amphitheater.
Uh huh, uh huh.
I do recall them talking about it.
A park, that's exactly right.
And we may never want to do the amphitheater now that we've got the one at the City Lake, but I agree to you, that's a good location to do a park and have some kind of a passive park there, especially with all the piper shooters we're going to have downtown. That might be a good location to have a little passive park.
And I don't know what $250,000 would do down there because it's, you know, I mean, it's very remote and it's going to, to get people to use it. You know, some study, some work was done on it for the park and realized how expensive, you know, that would be.
Yeah, how much it would cost to get in there and green it, but, so we're not looking at this as much. Maybe it could be done.
Yeah, and I'm not, you know, I'm not strongly recommending either one. I'm just saying that's my recollection.
Right.
So, it's up to council.
So, maybe we could just, maybe what works is we look at the qualified census tract, look at prop, start with property we own. That's the path of police resistance and see what the need is in the general area. And then, you know, see where that leads us instead of saying, let's build something here or build something there. See where maybe the analysis leads us.
So, where, how did, what's, where did we get 250 from, I guess? How did we come up with that number? Just grabbed it, I mean, so we really don't know what that would even-
We don't know what that would do.
I think that was at, the numbers, I forget what we designated, what we recommended be designated for the business park. That might have been more of a hard number, but I think the others were not really based on any cost or anything. What was it? The downtown Wi-Fi and-
It was recommendations and that could have to be adjusted as courts come in.
Public housing got some.
Right.
Right, and there was also the alleyway project, the risk manager. So, yeah, and some of the money was, there was, there was a change that some of the money that was going to the business park didn't go. And actually, that, well, I think we decided when we moved some of that away because we weren't sure before this whole $10 million lost revenue came in, that excess, excess, it's not a huge amount, but that might cover cost overruns on some of these others where we just put placeholder figures in there. And once things gets constructed, this one may come in a little over, this one may come in a little under because they were just placeholders to get us started to identify and publicly communicate how we were going to use the first tranche of money.
Now, just for clarification, the agenda packet say approve 250,000 to study a potential park. Or, are we actually talking about just consultant fees out of that 250 or I hope not?
No, that's just what was set aside to do this part of it. And if we study and it's a whole lot less, which I would hope it would be, then there's some money left over that can move into actual park building as long as it meets the A R P A timeline. Again, that was just some money moved in there and the first step is the study because where are we going to go?
So, what you're saying, I think, Michael, is to do, have a study done and figure out where. Not, not say is this part or this part, but what would the study suggest in terms of where we should put a park?
That, that's what I'm thinking. So, Lisa, would you like to make some current comments as well?
I think you hit the nail on the head when you said the survey is going to be based on need. That's where we need to make sure that we're addressing it and putting it where it needs to be.
So, from my experience, what we can do is, what we would do is do an R F Q for a consultant to do a park design. And through that, that would include community input. So, it could also include which location would be the best for us. Just ballparking that, that would be about 50,000. So, have about $200,000 left. But just to let you know, that's not a lot of money to develop park. So, but there are some stuff, some, some things, grants out there with very, like 20% matches. If we did a universal design, which is all-inclusive, then we can get quite a bit of bang for that $200,000. So, that grant will be due on November 1st. So, we do need to get moving on that as soon as possible because it will be a big, big grant. And it's the state of North Carolina through, and it's focusing on disabled veterans and then people with disabilities.
So, it's not a part of grant, it would be a-
It's part of, part of, but it's a whole separate, like 10 million dollars.
That's great.
Do you, Lisa, do you remember if there's any limitations on what grants we can use A R P money to match? You know, initially, we didn't think we could use it for match.
I haven't heard of any limitations that we couldn't.
Encouraged through the limits of use them for match.
I know all federal and-
Federal, state.
I don't think there's any limitation from the A R P A side. Sometimes the grant itself will have some sort of limitation if you got money from somewhere else. They want you to have skin in the game, so to speak. So, it's probably more on the grant-specific side than it is from the A R P A side.
If everybody is in agreement with that, I'm not going to ask you for a vote because it says to vote. We need to do that when we bring back an R F Q. But is everybody in agreement that this is what we're going to move forward? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for the clarification, everybody.
Coming around the table, Ms. Lout. I'm going to start with you. I missed you last time.
That's all right. You're going to miss me this time.
Mr. Aldrich.
No, sir.
Ms. Hughes.
No comment.
Mr. Townsend.
Go heels.
Mr. Ferris?
Want to remind everyone of the April 13th, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM Stormwater Public Input Session. They'll be held in this room of the city hall.
Is it going to be broad, is that going to be live stream or-
I believe so. It's live stream, recorded.
So, if we can't be here, we can get on there. Do we need to notify you that, how do we get that link?
I've got, when's April 13?
Okay, all right.
And then there's a follow-up one on the 11th of May, is that right? Right, thank you.
Ms. Hall?
I have not seen, and maybe I've missed it, where are we with Handy Sanitary? Are we?
L K C because it's, so Handy Sanitary is the group over in the Denton area that is looking to possibly connect to our system of Jack F. Deel plant to purchase water. So, that's a little bit of the background in case the Handy Sanitary didn't ring a bell. Of course, we also have other current customers that are, have some needs as well. So, it's being wrapped into a larger-scale study that L K C is doing. And they're trying to determine what is a shared cost for everybody and what we would have to do ourselves at the plant because we want to be fair and equitable and, you know, share costs where appropriate and pay for things that are solely our need. They are analyzing that. They've told me they should have something to me within a month. They, they actually made some initial, they were, asked for some initial documentation and Dan Morrell and I and some others with the public utility staff had some additional questions that they, and points to make. And so, they're, they're going back and reworking some of that.
So, right now, it's still on us completely from our point. We're not doing anything. They're not paying, they're not giving us anything yet for, the study is completely up to us.
Right, that analysis is up to us, yes.
Okay. And Foundation Forward, did we figure out what's going on there with the?
They have cleaned them. Their, their staff is going to be, is going to be relocated.
Their staff?
Our staff.
And just y'all, for those of you that, our foundation, our charters out front had started peeling. And they really did look bad. And somebody told me about it and I came up and looked at it. So, they just needed to be finished in there. I guess, whatever reason, it, it wasn't good to begin with. So, and just an add a boy to what was going on at the park on, on last Friday. And if those of you that want to know where the dance floor is going to be, it's still marked off out there. I mean, it's still, we've still got corners out there. So, that's all.
Mr. Whitley?
The only thing I've got is I rode by Waddell today, working on it. Man, that looks good.
It looks great.
You ever ridden by there? They got part of it paved already with the curbing and huge piles of dirt. So, I don't know where that dirt's going, but-
It looked like they finished probably 90% of, of the paving today.
Yeah, it, it's going to look really good. That'll make it so much nicer. But, do you think?
Mr. Dry?
We had some significant promotions with personnel, I'd like to thank. Congratulate J T, Ryan and Jay on their promotions. And I think it shows that we're doing some great things. We've got some good people and we're moving people around. And I, that, that's an important thing to, to see. Even had a mom call me and say, guess what? You know, that, that, yeah, that hits you pretty good. So, again, guys, thank y'all for what you do and getting good people moving forward. Sometimes you have to lose one and somebody gets to gain one. But thanks again. We appreciate what you're doing.
I'll entertain a motion that go into closed session for the North Carolina Journal Statute 143, 318, 11A, 3, 5 and 6 for consult with the attorney, real estate and personnel.
I'm moving.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion. All in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. For sessions.
I'm moving.
Motion by Councilmember Aldrich, second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. We have a agreement before us with Stanley Community College for a lease for the soccer field. I'll entertain a motion if council wishes to approve it.
I'm moving.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Aldrich. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn until Monday, April 18th at 6:30. Motion by Councilmember Lout, or second by Councilmember Aldrich. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
You've got an hour, boys.